Good evening again. We're gonna get back to order. It is seven o'clock. It's September the first, 2022. This is our special call meeting for the board to review options on setting the millage rate. We've already have had our pledge and invocation. Call to order for a special meeting. We'll ask the clerk to establish the quorum again, please.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Present.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
All members are present. We didn't lose anybody. We do have the agenda before us, so we'll ask the board, is there any modifications to our agenda as presented and advertised?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve the agenda as published. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion or modifications to the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, the next item on our agenda is for public comments, and this is the time that anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak on any topic. Our first comment section was for the millage only. This can be about the millage, the budget, any other items of, you know, of business. We do ask you to, you do have a limit of five minutes. We do try to steer you and ask you to make your comments just about things we can affect in the county. We can't fix the state problems and the national problems and the world problems, so try to, let's talk about things we can have an effect on. But it's your five minutes, you can talk about whatever you'd like. But we ask you to use your time wisely. So is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Yes, sir, Ken, would you like to come back? Please state your name again.
My name is Ken McCurry. As I had mentioned when I spoke a little earlier, that my wife and I have lived in this county for over forty years. You know, we have been good citizens to, to the best of our recollection. We have done everything that we needed to do as far as our property is concerned, as far as taxes is concerned. And as I've mentioned earlier, and I'd like to give you just a bit more information on, our neighboring county, Catoosa, has some years back, and I don't know when it started, but they actually removed the school tax completely at the age of seventy-five for their county residents. And speaking with Shannon just a little earlier this evening, he was unaware of what they did necessarily as far as the details of how they did it. I would like to solicit each and every one of you on this commission to look into that. There's a lot of senior citizens in this county that any little bit of tax, if it's thirty dollars, if it's a hundred dollars, it makes a difference to each and every one of us, especially those that are on fixed incomes. I would like for y'all to make a commitment to look into this, to see what might be done. And there was something published, I think recently, that, that they are now going back to the age of sixty-five, looking at how they can start removing the school tax portion of property taxes beginning at that age. And like I said, already at seventy-five, it's completely gone. Is that something that y'all would be willing to look into and see if y'all might be able to benefit the senior citizens and people that have lived and supported this county for so many years? And now it's an opportunity for y'all to help and to give something back to these people that have supported this county all this length of time. Would y'all do that? Would y'all be willing to do that?
Honestly, I already have done that. One of my neighbors asked me to do that. I did look into it. I talked to Carolyn Walker, and I talked to Terry Gilroy's office about that. And, and if we did that, I'm not saying we would, I'm not saying we wouldn't, but if we did that, that would take approximately five million dollars that the seventy-five and older are not paying, and put that five million dollars on people that are younger than seventy-five. So the money would still come in, it would just come from a different age group of people. So I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. I'm just telling you that, that's, that's my simple explanation on what it would do to the town.
The money's gotta come from somewhere.
That's right.
You know, we understand that. But I would certainly, you know, like to hear from, from any of y'all on what, you know, might be done, and if y'all would be open to checking into exactly, you know, what, what it might take, and then pursuing that, just...
Yeah, that's what it would take. It would take that five million dollars divided by the number of taxpayers lower than sixty-five, and it would increase their taxes by that much. Now, how much is that? You know, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that, but it would, it would obviously decrease your taxes of people over seventy-five, but people under seventy-five, it would drastically increase some of their taxes.
And your neighbor had the same concern that I do about, you know, the...
Yeah, yeah, he was just requesting the same thing to me that you did. Yes, sir. That's right.
Well, I'd just appreciate it. If that's something that y'all would consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that'd like to speak tonight? Okay, we'll move forward then on our agenda. We only have one action item on our agenda tonight, and that is to set the millage. So what's been advertised publicly, put on our website, is a resolution R-034-22, the adoption of the millage rate to be set at seven point two mills in the unincorporated area and ten point two nine three in the incorporated area. So that's what's been advertised, and then the appropriate documentation for that is also attached because it shows on this resolution, you know, what was advertised, what the final was, and how it breaks out in the unincorporated area and the incorporated area. And, and people, many times I ask, it's a great question, why is it different? Why is the millage rate different for unincorporated and incorporated? And you'll see on that second page of the resolution page, the difference is in the insurance rollback. And so your gross millage rate is the same. And in this example, it shows twelve point nine seven three. And then in the unincorporated, there's a three point oh nine three mill rollback. And then you have the sales tax rollback that's applied to both. And so that's the difference, is that insurance rollback. And the reason that that is different is the cities also get a rollback, that they roll back their taxes to the city residents. And so the funding for that is just for the unincorporated. We don't get any of the share of that revenue. The cities get that for the city residents. And so that's why that difference is. As we've been having these public hearings, there's been a lot of conversation that we have had with our elected officials, our department heads, and our other government affiliates, as indicated earlier by our district attorney, Chris Hart, and there's others that we fund portions of their budget. Actually started on this budget process probably about the third week of May, something that I touch almost on a daily basis, working the, the budget process to try to, to back in, to see what the needs for the operation is of the county, you know, what it takes to provide the services where we have areas of deficiency, areas that we need to improve services on, and try to find out where that balance is. And it's a very challenging process because there's a lot of moving targets. And there's always more requests than there are dollars to go around. And I think you'll see that on any government budget. There's always millions of dollars more in requests than, than what there is actually funding for. And so the goal is, is to try to find that happy medium. And so you're doing a lot of projections and looking into the future. And one of the most challenging projections is the revenue side. What's the revenue going to be? Because our dependency on property taxes, just for round numbers of discussion, is around fourteen million dollars. But our budget needs are north of thirty million dollars. So the property taxes don't even cover fifty percent of the revenue. So there's a whole lot of other revenue items when you look at the budget, which is online, it's pretty thick. But you look at all the different revenue items, trying to figure out and project and look at trends, and about every time we think we got it figured out, we get a surprise. And sometimes those surprises are good surprises, revenue's up. But many times, the surprise is, is something comes in lower. Our revenues are very much affected by the economy. So when you see a downturn in the economy, you see revenues will drop because, you know, it's affecting due to a recession, or setback, or, you know, a pandemic. There's so many things that affect those revenues. So one example, our sales tax revenues were up during the, during the pandemic, but the court systems were shut down. So there was no money coming in from the court systems. And so, you know, you've got these ebb and flows up and down constantly. So the board, and individual conversations that I've had with them, they've all been great to work with. They've all been very sincere, very dedicated to try to find out what the, the right answer is, and where the budget needs to be, because that drives what the millage rate is, and that drives what every taxpayer that owns property in this county is requested to pay to fulfill those needs. And so when we put out the proposed millage and the proposed budget, that's the work that, that I'm responsible to do under our Enabling Act, as the chairman and CEO, Enabling Act requires, specifies that the chairman is to present a balanced budget. And that's another thing in this process, you've got to have a budget that's balanced. And so of all the different departments, all your revenues, all your expenses, at the end of the day, you got to come to zero. So you've got to make some decisions. And, and some of this is subjective, and it's, you know, some, some opinions is driving some of these things because you're speculating and projecting what some revenues may be. It's just like when we look at all sixty-nine of our buildings, I've got to project what the natural gas cost is gonna be. I got to project what the electric bills are gonna be, the water bills. And then I got to factor in a certain amount of water line breaks, because just in the region we're in, and the movement of the earth, we're gonna have water line breaks. And I know if you haven't had one, your time's coming, and it's your own resident. But we have to project those because when the county has a water line break, we have to pay those costs of whatever that water is that run out. They don't give us a discount either. So there, as you can see, I hope there's a lot of trying to project what fuel costs are going to be. You know, gasoline fuel cost is another thing that is really hard to do. And, and I've actually internally on, on my spreadsheets, moved that number internally two or three times because I think gas is coming down. Well, no, it's starting back up a little bit. And so when you're trying to project what the gas and fuel cost is gonna be, over four hundred plus vehicles, and, you know, that are running all over the county and providing first response service. And, you know, some of those trucks are in, in service twenty-four hours a day if they're, you know, on ready standby. So lots of moving parts. It takes a collaboration. There's no way one single person can put a budget together. It takes input. It takes collaboration. It takes buy-in, and it takes balance of, you know, give and take. You know, you've got to say, you know, tell us what you're, what you just absolutely got to have. Tell me what your wish list are. Tell me what your dreams are, you know, and try to, you know, we try to accommodate. And in some departments, you know, we've had deficiency in, in old vehicles, you know, where vehicles, you know, they look like they, they're antiques. Some of them are pretty close to that. And, you know, and then that drives up repair costs. And so we've tried to systematically, over the last several years, to replace a few vehicles. Because if you're not, when you have a fleet of over four hundred vehicles, if you're not replacing a few vehicles every single year, you're, you're behind the eight ball. That also applies with road paving. If you're not paving a few roads every year, and in our case, if we don't stay in an average of about thirty to forty miles a year, then it's gonna take sixty, seventy, eighty years to pave every road in the county. And so that's what's happened to our county in the past, is some of these things got laid aside, and we got behind with a lot of our facility upkeep and maintenance, vehicles, and our roads especially. So when the board asked me to go back and take another look to see what I could, could come up with, because we do understand, we hear from people, and their concerns of just this inflationary cost in general, you know, we're, we're still in that nine-plus percent inflationary cost. We know that affects everybody, but it also affects your local governments because we have those same costs in, in utilities and, and fuel and so forth. And so I went back, spent some time over the weekend, you know, going back through and looking at the trends, looking at the data. And I sent all four of these guys individually a text message on Saturday and said, hey, I think I found a, a good solution here as an option for them to consider that would reduce the budget by five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars that would be needed. So the request you'll see was for six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars round number. So I was able to pull that back where the budget request that I feel like that we need to come up with a balance would be to set the unincorporated millage rate at six point nine mills. So the proposed was seven point two. This would be bringing that down to six point nine on the unincorporated. And then on the incorporated area, that would drop that down to nine point nine nine three. That would still generate a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. That would show an increase of ninety-three percent of one, well, ninety-three basis points, less than one percent. And so when you look at the five-year history, which gives you six years worth of data with the current year, in 2017, basically, we were at fourteen million dollars of a dependency on the county's property taxes. This would put us at fourteen million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So if round numbers, over a six-year period, we would have increased the size of the dependency on the property taxes by basically, for conversation, a quarter of a million dollars over six years. And so when you have, the Consumer Price Index says since 2018, you know, they're seeing an average of three point three three percent of inflation every single year. And this is basically taking in, in less than a two percent inflation over the entire six years combined. So it's, puts us in a very lean budget. It's what I personally feel, after all of my due diligence, is where we need to be. We can reduce the original budget by five hundred and forty-seven thousand, still have a dependency of a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Again, the net millage rate on the unincorporated area is six point nine mills. The incorporated would be nine point nine nine three mills. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that the board consider adopting this proposal at six point nine mills and nine point nine nine three mills, and I make that in form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. I have met with three of the four constitutional officers, some of them are here tonight, and gone over the budgets with them. I met with the DA with you yesterday, went over his budget. I understand it's very challenging to meet what, what they're trying to meet. I also know that we have fifty-five thousand dollars in state mandated raises that we're having to give in the county. I do want to see the new positions created, and you can do that under this, right?
Yes.
The new position of the road department and maintenance. So I do want to see those positions created. I think we need them. And this does also include the eighty cent raise for employees that we talked about.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, so all employees would get an eighty cent raise. We'd be able to create the new positions that were outlined for the road department, IT department. And this would get us in a, in a balanced budget. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I, you know, it is a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase, and, and that's a lot of money to everybody. And, and I, I do struggle with, with, with seconding that. But when you look at it per person in Walker County, if you divide a hundred and thirty thousand by the number of citizens in the county, it's less than two dollars per citizen per year. So that's, you know, I think it's phenomenal, really, over the six-year period that you've only increased the budget that much. So again, I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Any comments on the board? Okay, at this time, we'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote on the motion.
Commissioner Blakemore.
No.
Commissioner Askew.
No.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoltz?
No.
Okay, that motion fails without support. We have to have three yes votes. It fails on a three, one, no. Okay. So at this time, we do have to set a millage rate tonight. So do we have a motion from the board on any other options?
I make a motion that we set the millage rate at six point eight two eight three in unincorporated, nine point nine two one three incorporated.
Okay, as I mentioned a while ago, we do have a motion on the floor, but I did give the board some other options per their request. And so I know y'all don't have this information, but we will make this available to you publicly. So what Commissioner Blakemore is making the motion on is to set a lower millage rate than what I was proposing. So what I was proposing in my motion, which failed, was to be at six point nine mills on the unincorporated. The option that Commissioner Blakemore's made the motion on is to set it at six point eight two eight three mills. And so when you look at the bottom line, that would reduce the revenue in the county of the dependency of the property taxes. It would reduce us down to a negative eighty-nine dollars. So we would receive in eighty-nine dollars less than what we collected or was invoiced out. Don't always collect everything in the first year, but what was invoiced out by the tax commissioner's office, we would be invoicing out eighty-nine dollars less this year than we did last year. So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Hang on a second. I appreciate all the work that you've done on this, but I have an elderly grandmother that is wheelchair bound. She cleaned houses till she couldn't walk anymore. She fell and broke her hip. And I, she is on a fixed income, and I know what this would do to her, if nothing else, other than her sitting and worrying about it. And I see what the effect on the younger families. I mean, yeah, I can go do more and make the money. But I've also left my house. I've got home at five-thirty, jump in a shower, and leave my house to come here for a commissioner meeting for this county, and have a two or three-year-old hanging on my leg currently because dad's leaving and you. And I'm not supporting that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for the kind words. So we, we do have a motion. I'm sorry.
I, I want to second this motion, and I, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna speak on it just briefly. As, as we've given kudos, and, and they're, they're well deserved. You've done a, a phenomenal job at, at working with the amount of money that you, we have to, to, to supply services to the citizens of Walker County. And, and probably never again, you know, in, in, in our tenure, we, we were, we were blessed with some, some other revenue streams that come in with this, with the, you know, we had half of our yearly budget that was given to us through the, through the COVID relief, American relief package or whatnot. And, and I do know, Commissioner Hart, you're very, very, very right. If you break it down and divide it through all the citizens, it's, it's very, very, very minimal. But I, I look at it a little differently. All the citizens aren't, aren't affected as much. And, and we all know that.
That's true.
We, we know that. And I'm not disputing. I'm just, I'm just stating my point, my, my position here, is that, that, you know, we, with, with our state mandated assessments that came out and, and hit everybody pretty hard. You know, of course, our, our, our school system's done what, what they, you know, done what they felt they needed to do. Just, just all the way across the board, as Shannon mentioned, even with the fuel bouncing around, commodities bouncing around, and, and it's just a, it's an opportunity that we can, that we can say and, and let the citizens see that we, we did, we did hold firm and did not increase their taxes this year. No matter whether it be a penny, it's not an increase. And I, and I feel like that it's, it's, it's something that we can do to try to help us get through these lean times and hope for better times because we don't know what's gonna happen next year. And to try to project it is almost impossible. You're, it's just, you're, you're just throwing darts if you think you know what's gonna happen in the world in the next year. So I, I, I do really appreciate the hard work, the sharpening of the pencil, and I, I know it's, you know, we need, we need all the funding we can get. But at this time, I, I will second the motion to, to hold our, our tax rate at zero increase.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board on the motion on the floor?
Yes, sir. I would like to interject a few comments. And I would like to say that our chairman did a wonderful job with working on this millage rate. He worked Saturdays. He took a lot of telephone calls, a lot of emails, was very gracious to work with. And Shannon, you just did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. McCurry, I think you said a lot when you said that the older citizens of our county who have been in this county for many years, I think we need to be sensitive with regard to when we set a millage rate. And I think that's important for our seniors. I think it's important for those younger folks who are struggling to make ends meet, living paycheck to paycheck. Thirty dollars could mean a water bill. Thirty dollars could mean a tank of gas. And I was really hoping that we could get us at this lower millage rate. And so thank everyone for your input, and thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Any more statements? Okay, we do have the motion on the floor. I will repeat, so one will understand. There's been a motion made by Commissioner Blakemore, seconded by Commissioner Askew, where we would set the, the unincorporated millage rate to six point eight two eight three mills would be the net millage rate for the unincorporated. The incorporated would be nine point nine two one three mills, which would result in a net decrease of eighty-nine dollars in revenue less than what we had last year. So at this time, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll for a vote.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Askew?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Well, I do support the six nine, but I'd rather have this than nothing, so yes.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Yes.
All right. We do have a unanimous vote, a four oh vote. So this passes by the board in a unanimous vote, if I can say that. Sorry about that. So that was our new item for business. So we do have, again, on our agenda for commissioner comments, we'll start again with Commissioner Blakemore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved. If I can ever help you in any way, feel free to call, text, or email. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Askew?
I'd like to just thank everybody. Like I said, it's, we, we, we come in twice a month and try to do the best job that we can with the information that we have. And it, it is a hard and very strenuous process, and it's hard on everybody. Shannon puts in a whole lot more hours probably day to day than we do. But we, we, I know us district guys put in a lot, too. We, we talk to a lot of people, and we try to work hard to help. And so I, I just appreciate everybody. Like I said, it is, it's a, it can, it can get arduous and strenuous sometimes, and it's very emotional sometimes. But we want to try to do what's right for the citizen, appreciate the input so that it helps us better make decisions. Also, and Mr. Hart's gonna have more information on this as well, our Walker County Ag Festival, Mr. Hart?
Yes, I was gonna mention that.
That's why I'm handing this off to you, sir.
Is it the sixteenth or the seventeenth?
It's the seventeenth, November five.
Saturday, the seventeenth.
Yes, sir.
At the Ag Center. Yeah, it's a lot put into there. County just worked hard on that. The FFA's have worked hard on that. The Forests Group's worked hard on it. It's a great event. It lasts all day long that day, so take time to get by there. And also the car show is Labor Day.
It's Monday.
The sheriff, yeah, the sheriff Wilson works long, and that, that's Monday Memorial Day at the...
Civic Center.
Civic Center, right. And that, that's from eight to eleven. So, yeah, try to make that. Rob?
Do you need to interject?
I did want to just interject one more thing real quick, and I'm sorry that gets out of order there. But I also wanted to, to, to give thanks to our, our staff that is, is your support staff, our support staff, but most especially your, these guys back here in, in the office, and all our department heads and all, that, that, all of you that combined the team. Because it is a team, and I think we've shown that. It's, the team's getting stronger and stronger. So I just wanted to thank the support staff as well. It's been a hard, I know it's a, a long battle, and, but we're getting there. So thanks for that as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank everyone for coming tonight. Want to thank all of our county employees for their very hard work and great job. very hard work and great job that you do. Want to thank all you guys as well for making all this come together. Thank you so much. And let me say this, it's it's such an honor to sit on a board with four other gentlemen and work through this process and come to a resolution and completion, and just want to thank all of y'all for helping out with this. Thank y'all. Thank you, sir.
I would like to spend a little bit more on the car and motorcycle show, I understand they're doing motorcycles now, so that is Monday at the Walker County Civic Center. And I think registration starts about eight-thirty, nine o'clock in the morning, registration, if you're showing a car or motorcycle in the competition, I think registration cuts off about eleven, but it goes through the afternoon because they want you to come and eat, okay? Because our good friend, Robert Wardlaw, will be there again this year with his Lucky IQ barbecue. And so he takes his proceeds from the barbecue sales and donates those back to the sheriff's office for the Stocking Full of Love. So come hungry and with a few dollars in your pocket, and some of the items that they're selling and taking donations as well, I'm sure, always for the Stocking Full of Love, which is where the sheriff's office, for many years, which was started by Al Malard, that's the Al Malard Stocking Full of Love, where they go and help families in need to provide Christmas for kids in our in our county. So it's a great program, it's been around several generations, and seems like it grows every year, and the needs grow. And so this is one of their big fundraiser events. And so if you don't, if you don't like barbecue for some reason, still coming, hand them a few dollars to go for, you know, giving some kids Christmas. And that's what it's all about, it's just to have a good day, hopefully the weather will be good, and it'd be there at the at the Civic Center. All right, at this time, on our agendas, to my understanding, there's no need for an executive session.
No.
Understand? Okay, no executive session. All right, so at this time, we'll move for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The very last thing I see on the note here, about forgot, we will not have a meeting next week. Normally, we're the second and fourth Thursday of the month. This meeting replaces the meeting next week. So we'll be back on schedule September twenty-second, the fourth Thursday of the month, September twenty-second, back here seven o'clock. Everyone have a good evening. Thank y'all.